Good evening. We'll call the board meeting for January 6th to order. It's will ask Ms. Babson to have the invitation for us if you'll pull the stand.
Let's pray. Father, we come tonight with thankful hearts that we live in a free America and that we have free education for our children. Our fervent prayer is that you would lead us to make the right decisions that would be whatever is best for them at all times. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'll have South Brunswick High School present the colors and the pleas of allegiance for us. Cover guard, action, check. Carry, colors.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please remain standing for the presentation of our nation's colors by South Brunswick High School Army J R B C color guard, Lieutenant General Sergeant Martina Morales, Lieutenant First Lieutenant Anna Nicky, Lieutenant Second Lieutenant Jimmy Trey Eastman, Lieutenant Corporal Gavin Cox, and Lieutenant Private First Class Felicia Ranwa, the Lions.
Forward, march! Cover guard, hold. Present, arms.
Please welcome the pleas of allegiance, remain standing, color guard, left to the floor.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the gospel of the liberty and justice of our own.
Order, arms. Hold. Right turn, march. Forward, march.
On your agenda there is a set of schools that we're going to recognize for PBIS, but there is an occasion that we're going through right now that some of you may know of, a lot of you don't know. But the month of January is actually the month where we recognize our school board, and it's from the School Board Association of North Carolina. And with that, there's a proclamation that goes with that, and I will read that to you. Whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world; and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child; and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students; and whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring this structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system; and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, we hereby declare our appreciation to the members of the Brunswick County School Board and proclaim the month of January 2015 as school board recognition month. Thank you. Our salutes tonight go to a special group of schools that have excelled in an area that a lot of us are not really aware of. Brunswick County Schools has long been a participant in the North Carolina Positive Behavior Interventions and Support State Improvement Project. The PBIS initiative supports schools in their efforts to create an instructional approach that educates all students with an emphasis on continuous, data-based improvement. It further supports schools in adopting a common approach to discipline that is proactive, instructional, and outcome-based. Each year, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction recognizes schools for their implementation and efforts with the project. For the 2013-14 school year, Brunswick County Academy, Leland Middle, Southport Elementary, Town Creek Elementary, and Virginia Williamson should all be commended for receiving the Green Ribbon Award. In addition, Bolivia Elementary and Cedar Grove Middle should be applauded for being recognized as model schools. So at this time, if a representative from BCA will come forward. Town Creek, Ms. C., thank you. Ms. Underwood from Leland Middle. And I know Ms. Urie is here from Southport Elementary. These are our Green Ribbon Award schools. Let's give those a group of hands. And now Bolivia Elementary and Cedar Grove Middle will be awarded their certificate for being recognized as model schools. Ms. Kathy Owens for Bolivia. And for Cedar Grove, the administration has the crud, literally there, one's in the hospital and the other one's at home. And Ms. Rhonda Benton, who was there previously, is going to accept for Cedar Grove. And again, let's give the board members a hand and all of these schools a hand for their success.
And tonight for our presentations, our first presentation is the 2015 Education Goals and Opportunities, and we welcome Representative Frank Iler.
Stand this way over here.
You should be okay.
Thank you, Board Chairman, members of the board. I want to thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. As you know, I went to all the schools since 2013, have been to all the schools and sat in the classrooms, and basically tonight, I'm going to focus on 2015. And goals that I have when we go back to Raleigh for the new session, and some opportunities I think we can all take advantage of here in Brunswick County. It's 2015. 2015, that's hard to imagine, 2015. But we have a new year to make the future better for Brunswick County, better for the children of Brunswick County, and better for our entire region and state. From my colleagues and I go back to Raleigh later this month, there are many priorities that will crowd into our plans for the new session. However, no priority is more important than safe, healthy, and effective schools for our children. You may know the education budget is over half of all the money spent in our state budget, and it is a huge priority with the money also. We need to always make sure a sufficient amount is getting into our classrooms. And again, as most of you know, I've sat in the classrooms, also set up an advisory committee of teachers, most of whom classrooms I sat in for over half a day. And I set this up to give me direct, unfiltered opinions on education issues straight from the classroom, unfiltered through any organization or any group, whether it be bureaucratic or advocate group or anybody else. We call it the Bell Committee, Brunswick Education Legislative Liaison Committee. That's why I said Bell, because it's so hard to say. And I put together a few notes and the project, I call it the Classroom Project, and that's just a few of the notes that I put together when I was visiting the classrooms. I've gone back to this and gotten a lot of good ideas from that, as well as my memories from going into the classroom. After consultation with these teachers, community leaders, and others, I've developed education goals for the new general assembly session, as well as some opportunities for all of us back home here in Brunswick County. Okay, does it have to have a noise? Okay.[768.51][768.51](laughter) All right. The first goal, teacher compensation is at the top of the list of priorities. Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest has given us a goal last year of being at or above the national average in teacher pay in three years. It started last year, the 2014-15 school year, with a 7% average increase. Every teacher got a raise, some got more than others. The House and Senate leaders, along with the governor, promised beginning teachers a $2,000 raise in 2015-16 to get up to a starting salary of $35,000. So that's already an obligation we have for this new school year. I'll be advocating that we expand that $2,000 throughout the pay scale for all teachers. This will be a $2,000 raise for all teachers. I'm not stuck on $2,000, but I think it would be a good starting point for the new budget. However, I've talked to some of our appropriations leaders already about this, and we know we'll have to find $200 million or more for this increase. So that's a goal that I've got for teacher compensation. Second thing is something I've been disappointed with for about three or four years. The teaching fellows used to award $28,000 scholarships to North Carolina high school seniors who qualified and who promised to teach at least four years in North Carolina. There are over 5,000 teaching fellows still teaching in North Carolina, many of them right here, and some in administration. Unfortunately, this is discontinued between 2011 and 2015. It'll be phased out by the end of the school year 2015. I think this is a big mistake. It should be restored, and this is very personal, as I have friends who could not have gone to college, who could not have been teachers without teaching fellow scholarships. I also helped judge applicants in 2009, 2010, and they were all very deserving, very smart. These were high school seniors from North Carolina that were given a pathway to be a teacher, and here's most of the payment that you'll need for college. So it's a very popular program and very effective. I'd be advocating to restore the teaching fellows. It's been in the House budget every year and taken out by the Senate. In the final budget, it was not in there. I sponsored the amendment last year to put it in during the 2014 session. This would cost about $12 million per year when fully phased in. Something else very important in talking to community leaders and others and looking at what supplies cost our teachers, I think we should explore education foundations, whether it's one foundation for all the schools or whether it's foundations in each school, that's details that, you know, I really don't know the answer to, but I'm sure we can figure it out. I plan to explore making education foundations available to all contributors so that contributions to all schools in the district and state will be tax deductible for state and federal income taxes. I'll be encouraging local action by school districts and Brunswick County schools to set up... Oh, excuse me. I've been encouraging local action by all the school districts. Many schools and school districts already have foundations, 501(c)(3)'s, for example. I encourage local school districts, including our Brunswick County, to proceed right away to set up a foundation by July 1st. And I have an article which I'll distribute to the board members before I leave about a Charlotte school who's already doing this. I know there's several school districts, including, I believe, Bladen County, who already set these up for the school district. So it is being done by a lot of schools already. I'll be finding out if there's anything necessary in state statute. I'll try to make it happen if it is. I'll pursue any changes that are needed. As it's already being done by other people already in the state, I don't believe changes are going to be needed. Besides the legislative goals, and this is just my education goals, obviously we're going to have dozens of other opportunities and goals in other areas, but that's the education goals I plan to pursue as the top of my list. We have a lot of opportunities right here in Brunswick County without spending extra taxpayer money. While it's convenient to look to the state to encourage excellence and good relations between our classrooms and our communities, I believe there are things we can do right here and right now to better serve the community and their children. I think we should develop relationships with potential supporters. I encourage you and the school system, you guys and the school system, to develop relationships with potential supporters. For example, Union Elementary is doing a particularly good job with this. They have their sponsor board out on the road showing all their sponsors in front of the school, with sponsors' names on public display, and that's an idea of the contact they have with their community. I believe all schools could do some of this. Some are probably doing some, they could probably do more, is what I'm saying. I suggest that we have an adopt a school program. I've already heard that name elsewhere, I believe, and some organizations doing this. I encourage you and the school system to promote an adopt a school program among businesses, civic groups, and individuals. Some groups are already doing something like this, however, I see a lot more potential in tapping our businesses and our community for resources doing this. And again, I encourage a foundation to be set up soon, going back to the foundation, so that contributors can get a tax deduction. A good example of what can happen if this is done is the program I heard about in Fayetteville. In Fayetteville, the realtors collect money, gift cards, and supplies for school classrooms and funnel them into the classroom. I hope this is pursued by the realtors here and by you. And I've spoken to the board of realtors and to their representative, Steve Cantler, and he has already discussed it with his board, so I believe they're going to be on board with it. I believe a goal, in fact, I'd be glad to write the first check as soon as we get started with this. I believe a goal of $100,000 is possible the first year, which will be our next school year possibly. Eventually, I believe up to $1 million will be available from these sources to our classrooms for resources such as supplies and technology. And I saw smart boards sold out for the first time when I went in 2013, and it's amazing what can be done with those and other technologies that we need to be using. And this is on top of what the state and county will already be doing, which I know you do a lot and we do too, so this is on top of that. Community relations, I encourage you to include the public very early in major initiatives such as capital needs, bond issues, and other major projects and decisions. The public will be supportive if they understand the mission and the goals behind such initiatives. I urge you to utilize your proactive media program to stay ahead of the message, actually use it to get ahead of the message and to stay ahead of the message. You can wait until the media and the public attacks what you're trying to accomplish, or you can get ahead of the message by informing them what you're doing and why. This is an area we can all do a better job, and I plan to do a better job hopefully out of Raleigh and like to see that throughout the organization here and back in my home county here. I recommend creating a community advisory group, such as already exists, for parents and teachers. Your board policy has already called for inclusion of non-parents in the parent advisory council, but apparently this may not have been the practice. Now hopefully other citizens who pay taxes and vote can have a voice that maybe they don't have now. And you already have the parent advisory council and the teacher advisory council, so this will be an extension possibly of the parent advisory council. These are ideas now for this year. And the community engagement, other community engagement ideas, there are a lot of ways we can show our appreciation for what our teachers do for our children every day. I encourage your creativity coming up with programs to do that, and I've just thrown out some of my own ideas here. Again, going back to adopt a school, maybe have a adopt a school fun day, where the adopt a school sponsors put on activities for fun and education, make learning fun. I've seen a lot of teachers do that, I think the community can help do that too. I recommend Love My Teacher Day for parents and students. It could be like a birthday party, a big birthday party for everybody with gifts or whatever is appropriate, for all teachers on the same day, just because you're my teacher. And happy birthdays, I don't know how much we're celebrating our principals and teachers' birthdays, I recommend that we do that type of thing on a regular basis, if at all possible. So this is some of the goals, opportunities, and ideas, some of which I can work and some which you can promote. This should be a beginning of a new year in 2015 to give us a chance to do better for our Brunswick County children, our Brunswick County teachers, and our North Carolina teachers. I believe we can make a real difference in how our teachers and schools are viewed by our community, as well as how our teachers view themselves. And these are just a few of the reasons I'm starting the new year by saying, "Teachers put the class in classroom." I've got a few buttons I've had prepared, and I think some of the folks have got some for you guys. Teachers put the class in classroom. It's just a saying I think we all think about when we're thinking about some of the creative ideas we can have to help our teachers, and of course, the ultimate goal to help our children. This is my brother passing these out, he's not my twin, probably.[1446.83][1446.83](laughter)
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions or anything before you step away? If not, thank you.
We certainly appreciate your thoughts, Frank. Are we getting a copy of what you just told us?
Not of my remarks. I'll provide you a copy later, but that's the article about the Charlotte school, and I can provide...
And this is not your brother. This is your friend.[1474.51][1474.51](laughter)
From another mother. That's my twin. Eventually, for the next few days, might be appearing in the schools.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Iler, I'd like to just add that I know the board appreciates all the interest that you have taken into the schools, and I know it's made a big difference in Raleigh because you have gotten close enough to us to understand what's going on and what our needs are. And I think sometimes decisions were made when people hadn't been connected with schools that much, so we can't tell you how much we appreciate it.
And now we hope our teacher of the year has her button on before she...[1548.51][1548.51](laughter) You might need a first grader to show you how to do it.[1556.83][1556.83](laughter) We'll have Ms. Casey Smith this... I'm just kind of interested. I guess I better get mine on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy New Year. I'm going to start by reading two quotations that are actually up on the projector behind you all if you want to follow along. "Leadership among the staff and with the administration is shared in order to bring consensus and common, shared ownership of the vision and purpose of work of the school. Teachers should assist in determining school budget and professional development, participate in hiring processes, and participate in decision-making structures." Those two quotes come from pages two and three of the North Carolina Professional Teaching Standards. It's very clear that Brunswick County Schools' teachers have a voice. This voice has been made possible over the past few years through various forums. For example, there's the one that I'm standing in, given to the County Teacher of the Year to address the Board of Education each month. There is the Teacher Advisory Council, which meets with the Superintendent's Cabinet monthly. And there are the open doors of our administrators, as well as committees inside schools, such as our school improvement teams. The existence and progress of these forums have led us to a new point and a new vision. Today in the new year, teachers want to pose a new question to propel us forward. Are our voices being listened to, valued, and most importantly, utilized? I believe that half of this question, or path to the solution to this question, lies in the way that we teachers use our voice. Teachers are very passionate people, and often, I think I've mentioned this before, our passion turns into frustration towards policies, procedures, and programs that filter down. Policies many times which we, as the people on the proverbial ground, sometimes believe will not be effective, and as a result of that frustration, oftentimes what happens is we voice our ideas, our experience, and our expertise in ways that do not make others want to listen. So this is where we, as teachers, have work to do in the delivery of our messages. We need to be better as a whole about engaging our leaders, whether they are principals, central service staff, board members, or elected officials, thank you for being here, Mr. Iler, from a place of positive vision for public education's future. On the other hand, as a language enthusiast, I know that there is a subtle but very significant difference between hearing and listening, and the other half of the solution to the question, are teachers' voices being listened to, valued, and utilized, lies in the minds of those doing the hearing. The doors are open, the ears are hearing, the forums exist, but for many individual teachers, the defeat which drives low morale often in our profession comes from the feeling and the awareness that no matter how much we speak or how well we say it, the minds of our listeners are not always open to accept ideas to inform decisions. In the teaching world, it's common knowledge that relationships are necessary for student learning and growing to occur. In a similar fashion, functional relationships are necessary for shared decision-making to take place, to be authentic, and to be successful in Brunswick County schools. And this idea of shared decision-making is what leads me tonight to share some specifics of the progress of our teacher advisory council this year. The teacher advisory council's greatest challenge is to narrow down our focus so that we can make meaningful and concrete progress on something in one year rather than spending a lot of time on discussing lots of things. Allow me to... Allow me to give you some background which some of you may be familiar with. At our very first meeting in October, we brainstormed what exactly our roles and responsibilities would be as teacher leader representatives for our schools and colleagues so that we had ownership of those responsibilities and they were not just being handed to us. We also brainstormed universal issues that are in need of better solutions or clearer communication for teachers and BCS. And out of this brainstorming came a list of 22 or so ideas, which overlapped into 16 concrete, if we want to call them quote-unquote, issues. We created a very simple two-question survey for teachers of Brunswick County to answer. 376 teachers out of over 800 chose their top five issues from that list of 16. As you can imagine, the November meeting had a super-packed agenda. It included ways that we could grow our teachers' voice in Brunswick County to be constructive so that it will be heard by decision-makers, and also what tools and people are necessary for that voice to be heard. And from there, we transitioned into our first look at the survey results. There was a clear number one when it came to teachers' responses. Multiple focuses and initiatives decrease planning time, which negatively affects instruction. In order to begin dissecting this issue, we finished out that November meeting by looking closely at what procedures and mechanisms we currently have in place in our schools and at the district level to allow teachers an opportunity in prioritizing the programs and focuses and initiatives that are implemented. So what we are really wanting are honest conversations about which procedures and mechanisms are truly authentic versus those that may be going through the motions, which are model examples of best practices for shared decision-making versus those that are really just ink on paper. So these next steps and questions were a nice segue into our December meeting. And remember how I mentioned that our greatest challenge was narrowing down our focus into a topic we could make meaningful progress on? Well, my job has been to analyze the data from our meetings and use it to inform our agendas. At this point, school improvement teams have emerged out of TAC's progress as a place where best practices for shared decision-making are taking place in some of our schools. It is very apparent that school improvement teams serve different functions throughout BCS. So our goal will be to have a clear focus for BCS... Excuse me, a clear focus for BCS about what the purpose of school improvement teams are, what exactly the rules are, I'm sorry, roles are of the different participants in school improvement teams. And these best practices can then be noted, documented, and shared so that there is consistency across the system, something that teachers and our community craves. We hope that leaders inside Brunswick County schools, and especially teachers, will keep up with the minutes from our meetings and continue engaging in discussions and conversations inside our schools. And speaking of those minutes, I'd like to point you to the location where you can find those. And if you go to Brunswick County Schools webpage and you click Staff, you'll see the teacher's voice right over here on the left-hand side. Our teacher's voice webpage obviously is up and running again, and it has information on this year's teachers and instructional assistants of the year, the teacher of the year process in our school system, and the purpose and progress of TAC, including our meeting minutes and these presentations which I share monthly. In conclusion, teachers want to thank the people and relationships in our system that have made the teacher's voice stronger over the past few years. And we just ask that more relationships are continually nurtured so that this voice is listened to and utilized and shared decisions throughout our system in the future. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much. Any questions, any comments, any...
When you're talking about the teachers having a part in the budget process, you're talking about within the individual school as you're determining what's best for that school or which way to...
Well, if I could pull up the... Actually, maybe this will open. I believe this particular quote is referring to schools. It's referring to teachers having leadership within their schools. And that is a common... This is a common opportunity for school improvement teams to look at budget concerns or opportunities. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our next school spotlights, Ms. Swinski? I think we got a sneak preview on last night. At least I think I got...
Kind of got posted a little early.
A little sneak preview on Facebook. So I don't know if that was right.
Thank you for following us on Facebook, Ms. Cook. That is exactly right. And I'm going to make sure we pull up tonight. It's very exciting. We're excited to have with us Shalote Middle School and Union Elementary School. And as we typically do, we're going to show the two videos and then invite the principals up to offer a few words and allow you to answer any questions for them. So we're going to start with Union Elementary.
At Union Elementary, we believe in excellence in academics. We also believe in educating the heart. So our motto here is heart and mind.
Whenever a child walks through the doors here at Union, they become ours.
The Watch Dog Program, DOG stands for Dads of Great Students, and it's to get more dads involved in the school.
The idea behind Watch Dogs is that fathers would volunteer at least just one day out of the school year at their child's school. And if every father here at Union did that, then there would be a lot more male role models in the halls.
Implementing PBIS in our school has made a positive change in behavior in having the positive reinforcement and something that the children are working for.
We educate children by using PBIS. That's Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. That's teaching children the behaviors that we want to see, appropriate behaviors.
Our PTO is unbelievable. They do two fundraisers a year, but they have managed to put smart boards, some iPads, lots of technology into our classrooms, and they've also bought some new playground equipment. They buy things for the teachers for their classroom, classroom newspapers. They do staff morale boosters.
I think Union is special because of our teacher leaders, our leaders, the way that we all work together.
Working with children on a day-to-day basis is one of the most rewarding things that I could do because in their eyes, you can see them grow.
And when you walk through our schools, I think you see a warm environment and a loving environment and ongoing educational opportunities.
My kids love their teachers here. We have just the teachers and the staff and the office personnel, everybody, the resource staff, they're just all wonderful.
This is an excellent institution of higher learning.
Of course, I think Union is the best. The staff is number one. Our school climate is warm. We nurture children, and we hold high expectations. And our children rise to that expectation.
I love Union Elementary because all the teachers love you, the principals love you, and all the staff loves all the kids.
It's really welcoming, and it feels like a giant family. Everybody's unique, but they all accept each other.
I love the children here as my own.
Boys and girls, remember.
The sun is always shining at Union.
Principal of Union come tonight. We'll do it a little different tonight. Come on up, Ms. Smith.
Well, we know that. It's probably in the future. But what else can I help you with? Come on, come on.
It was so long, we didn't get to read it.
There's a long list.
There were lots of things on that list, but if you saw at the beginning of that wonderful video clip...
1950.
1950 is the main number I wanted you to see at the beginning. I'm sorry.
It was saying 1950. That's probably one of the oldest schools.
So just keep that in mind when we need things and when we request things like a new roof or a new building or a few new buildings, or the land across the street or the land beside us.
Just a comment to that, though. I went out and participated in the QAR at Union Elementary. And it's not always the brick and mortar about what goes on at that school. And it's obvious at Union that you have an excellent staff there, and they make things right regardless... And the school's in a decent shape. I mean, it's well-kept for as old as it is.
Mr. Thorson, we've won the Clay School Award the last two quarters. Just want to point that out.
And it is obvious. It is extremely obvious. And of course, that's one of my favorite schools, too, because I've got some ties there or used to have ties there.
You still have ties there. And you know, and you're exactly right. It's not the bricks that make the school. It's just the whole environment of that school, of the staff, the work ethic. You know, that school is our heart. I always say, if you cut me, I bleed blue. You may bleed red, Rhonda Bennett. I bleed blue. So it's just that school pride. You know, we call it dolphin pride. We have dolphin pride. We have dolphin love. But we have excellence in academics, and that starts with the staff. And the parents are very involved. The community is very involved. We did put up a billboard. I know that was crazy, but we just thought we owed our corporate sponsors... Our school raises about 20,000 a year in corporate sponsorships, and that's just our PTO getting together in the summertime, sending out letters saying, "Would you like to support Union Elementary? Of course we would." And so we put their names on our shirts. But we're kind of running out of space. We're thinking we're going to have to go to a long-sleeve shirt or something. So we just put up the billboard, thinking that would be a nice way to thank all of our corporate sponsors for the money they give. And you can give $500, you can give $1,000, you can give a million dollars if you want to.
You could have a new building with a million. We could start a new building.
Yeah, that's true. Eventually, you know, that building from 1950 may need to be replaced. The classrooms are very small in that building. But we're doing the best we can with what we have. And we did install new cubbies this year. Thank you, Mr. Eckert. We installed new cubbies this year that have helped out a lot with the storage issues in those very small classrooms, so.
How many students do you have there now?
620.
It was a school built for that many students, though? Or have we expanded it?
I think it's gone through many renovations. Rhonda may be able to speak to that a little better. But I think the last one was in 2005, that newest wing.
But there are no mobile units there now in use?
There are four mobile units out back. They are not in use for children because they don't have water or bathrooms or covered, you know, covered walkways to get to them. So I don't really like for my children to be out in the weather. They don't have to be.
I used to be a teacher's assistant there and worked a lot as a substitute teacher. So I know how old it is.
I know how old my mother is, and I knew you were there with her.
Well, youth is a state of mind.
Our building, our campus... Yeah, our campus does have a lot of character. You know, sometimes the older builders do have a lot of character to them, and there's a lot of pride in those old bricks. So it's, you know, it's still, it's a wonderful school. 1950 or not, it's a wonderful school. And I heard somebody say this morning, one of my TAs brought her intent form up and folded it and gave it back to Ms. Schottl and said, "You've got to be kidding me, right?" And Ms. Schottl said, "What do you mean?" And she said, "Who would lead this place? You can hold this one for somebody else." So, you know, I'm feeling that it's a happy place to be. If it's ever not, somebody let me know. See what I can do about that.
You're certainly the leader of it, and I know, I speak for all of us, I guess, but we just appreciate your leadership there. That's what counts in a school, is the leadership.
Well, I have a great staff. That's the main thing. I always give my staff the credit because they are the school. And they come to work every day, and they do a great job. I have with me today, have with me tonight, Ms. Marie LaBoy, my wonderful assistant principal, Ms. Jackie Hardy, teacher assistant for at least... Better not say how many years. Sorry, Ms. Hardy.
You weren't there with Ms. Babson. We know that.
So I appreciate your time. But you know, we welcome visitors. We love to entertain. Just come on down. You'll be entertained just walking up and down the halls, I promise. It's always something to see, so.
And we thank you very much. And also, you know, we're just very proud of Ms. Smith as our principal of the year. So thank you very much for the example that you set for all of us in administration.
Thank you.
Are we going to do something different to Shalote Middle? It should run okay? All right, and Shalote Middle School.
Shalote Middle is a great public school. Our demographics are almost exactly like those of the nation. We are teachers and students, and our KES program have dedicated ourselves to make this a microcosm of the United States, dedicated to those three great ideals, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And we base that all on respect. And our students have bought into it, so has our staff. This is a great place to be. We respect the opportunity to learn, and we respect each other. We found an outlet for a whole group of students to come together and build that teamwork. And it's keeping every youth successful. It meets during our enhancement period. And the kids come together. They dedicate themselves to pursuing high academics, being model citizens, and working together.
It is a key component to why we're so successful here. I truly believe that. It provides discipline and organization to kids who might not normally get that.
Peer Court is a student-led judicial organization. So you take real cases from real incidents that have happened at this school, and the students get to act as jury or bailiff or defense or prosecuting attorney. And so they really get to learn more about the judicial system and how it works. And it's really great for enriching your learning, especially if you possibly want to have a career in law in the future. But even if you don't, it's really great to learn about how our government works.
Our teachers are probably the best in the county, and they care about each one of their students individually.
Shalote will just invest in your kids. It'll invest in your kid's future. It'll invest in your relationship with the students. We're going to spend the time needed to make sure that your students get the right education.
My children have had great experiences at Shalote Middle School. They've been academically challenged. The teachers have been amazing. They're dedicated teachers.
Shalote does a great job at meeting its mission, which is to reach kids and partner with parents to help grow students and future adults that are ready for the 21st century here in America.
Shalote Middle School is really a great school, and it definitely does prepare you for every aspect of life. It teaches you about how to interact with other students. It definitely does provide a very nurturing and warm environment. And it also makes sure you're ready to go to high school and then later college.
If you can get the kids to respect themselves and be willing to work hard at what they do, they're going to succeed. I know that anybody who dedicates themselves to working hard and to doing the best they can is going to succeed, especially in this country.
I enjoy learning, and I know that my future is all about me learning.
I'd like to invite our former principal of the year, Paul Price, to vote.
And with Lisa Martin and Dr. Hargrove, I think you said it so well, that a school starts with that sense of community. It starts in the classroom. I think Mr. Tubb told me when he came over, what happens when that door closes is where the rubber meets the road. So if you can get that relationship going, the school's going to take care of itself because that teacher and that 20 or 30 kids right there is where it's all at. And like we said in the video, one of the things we try to do at Shalote Middle is... The one great thing I love about public schools, you're taking people from different religions, different walks of life, and you're putting them in a room together, and you're saying, "Guess what? You're in a boat together. It's called the United States of America. And if you guys learn to work together, we'll all be good in the future." And I think when you look at the news around the world, what's happening today, if we lose sight of that fact, the United States could disintegrate really quickly. And I think that's one thing that, almost like a preacher, we have to do in our public schools. But I just want to say, this school board, you guys have been great to Shalote Middle. If you drive by, we're putting on a roof. We just had two basketball goals put in. We're going to hit you guys up for some more soccer fields and baseball fields and a place to store our equipment outside behind the building. Because those are the kind of things that makes the school a real center. Shalote Middle, since I've been there, is like a community center. Even though teachers are there from 7:30 to 5:30, there's something happening with parks and rec until 9:00, 9:30, 10:00 at night. And it is actually a place where people come, the community comes. And I think if we take care of our building and do some of these great things, that'll keep happening. Our PTO, too, raised, so far, first fundraiser, $12,000. And they've been buying smart boards, anything we need. Kim Filman, Sidney Jones, her mom, Ms. Jones, Karen Jones, anything that we ask, they do for us. And it's that kind of support. kind of support in the community. And Vicki is a tough act to follow, let's tell you. She spoils her parents when they come over, and I have to say, you know, middle school's just a little different. But I love her.
You take the same money, though, don't you?
Yeah, let's say. She is, she is something, though. But it is all about those meetings with the parents, because I was just sitting with my teachers today, and coming back from break, some of our kids aren't in, you know, work is work. Schoolwork is work. So you kind of have to teach, convince the kids that it's worth doing. But this year, 2015, has been a school on our site for 100 years. Sunnyside was in 1915. And that's the kind of thing-
Were you there, Shirley?
I think I was in eighth grade and the fourth grade there.
I guarantee you, Ms. Hewitt and Ms. Gates was there. And Ms. Todd before them. But it's just a great place, and I, it's an honor to serve there, and with, with these two wonderful women, with our teachers. And we can never do enough for our students, and I think our teachers feel that way, too, because, like, they're our future. I tell them all the time that they're, you're gonna pay my retirement, so we gotta get you a good job. But if you guys have any questions, I can answer for you. And thank you for your support of the KEES program. I'd love to get a junior ROTC program. I think there's one in the nation in Arkansas. That would be really nice to run like a PE class. But when the economy kind of went down, any hopes of doing that kind of went away. But that would be great, because the kids really buy into that program.
It's turning around some, the economy is, so we can look forward.
That'd be great. But any questions?
Oh, you're probably some of those capital needs. Like, I don't think I saw a bus canopy and stuff like that.
Here, he's coming soon. We've already, he's already been him off a couple of times this year. And every time, we hit him up for, we got a lot of land behind the school. We can sell the timber, do a really nice soccer field, and some sports fields, and maybe a cross-country track. Build in an outside metal building to store PE equipment to get them out of our locker rooms, so to redo our locker rooms and actually use them, because they're not in a position that you would actually want to, to really use them. One of me, to me, one of the most important things is our ceiling tiles are getting old. So just for air quality, that's kind of high up on the list. And science rooms. I can't say enough about math and science rooms, because those are the two areas that kind of concern me the most. Science moves so fast, and it's been a long time. You know, textbooks aren't the whole answer, but they're really a big part of it, to get some fresh information, something the kids can take, you know, take home with them, hold on to. And the same thing with math. But I will definitely, when he comes, we'll have you a list. But any other questions, guys? I just can't thank you enough for your support, though.
Just a comment. And of course, Shalote Middle School, I have ties with that, too. But one of the best things we did back was when we built Cedar Grove to try to eliminate the overcrowding there, because 1,000-plus students at a middle school does not wanna work. And, and that was one of the best things that this board has done.
I can't tell you the difference between, I think my first year, I had like 970, then we went down to 600 the next year.
Absolutely.
It was, we're up to 669, 659. We enrolled a new one today, by the way, so we're inching back up. But that made a world of difference. It just slows the building down to where you can form those relationships.
And no mobile units?
No mobile units. No, that is crazy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To make sure that as people are watching these videos, and they're seeing those needs on the very last slide, those needs were actually generated through the Facilities Master Plan. And so those are needs that, in actual excess, were $225 million worth of needs that were whittled down to $100 million in need. So as the schools are bringing these things forward, we're talking deferred maintenance on some of the issues, which, you know, can only last so long. And then there are some new initiatives, like what Paul and Vicki were talking about tonight, that could definitely impact us as well. So I just wanna make sure that as people are watching these videos, they understand the gravity of what we really are looking at as far as capital needs in our system. And just one more note, I wanna thank Mr. Eiler for these buttons. Mr. Eiler has graciously provided one of these for every teacher in Brunswick County schools. And I just wanna make sure, as I was passing them out, people are like, we want these for our teachers. I'm like, they're coming, they're coming. So I wanna thank you, Mr. Eiler, for all that you've done, also for our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. At this point, we will go ahead and approve, have approval of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion that we, approval for the agenda?
Yes, this is-
Any change?
Approve the agenda as written.
Mr. Thompson, make a motion. A second?
Second.
Mr. Miller? There's no change, and we'll go on to the first item, which is the approval of minutes from the December 2nd and the December 17th meeting, committee meeting and regular meeting.
Maybe we'll approve the minutes for the December 2nd, December 17th meetings.
Counselor, I can-
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Imposed? And now, we will return to the approval of the meeting agenda, and we will take a vote on that. Do I have a vote? See, I get to mess up the first meeting. I get to mess up the first one. We have, we had a motion and a second. Do we have a vote? All in favor of the meeting agenda?
I just have to say, I was very impressed by the speed in which you handled that.
Gosh, almost.
He kicked me first.
Almost. All right. All in favor of the meeting agenda?
Aye.
Imposed? All right. Now, we'll move on, since we have had the approval of the minutes. Is that correct?
I think that was my fault, not yours.
No, that's okay. All right. And we'll move on to the consent items. We have some consent items for approval. First. Have a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments? All in favor of the approval for the budget calendar and the budget amendments as stated?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
All right. All right. We'll move on to the action items for approval. The amended CIS contract. We have, anybody with CIS that we need to-
Is this the amendments that we ask you to make for this year only?
Which we looked at in committee.
If you'll notice on the third from the last page, in the gray, you will see where we will continue to let CIS use our facilities, even though we are, we as a school system are closed for this year. But then, next year, it rolls into, to going into our normal way of facilities use and reimbursement of that.
All right. Have a motion to approve the CIS contract?
I'll make a motion to approve- The amended CIS contract.
We had discussion about it in the committee meetings, so I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. We have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Move on to discussions and announcements. Mr. Tubb, would you like to discuss anything?
I think that Mr. Eckert's here that can help us also. The number one and number two items, even though they were approved at the committee meeting, the committee wanted to talk about, or have us talk about those two items, so that our public would, would see the transparency as we move into making and spending some money, and, and how we spend that money, instead of just doing it behind or in a committee where we have very few people there. Craig, if you would, take just about 30 seconds on each one, because they're fairly similar.
Back in November, we issued a request for qualifications to firms to come on out and review the condition of our athletic facilities. And basically, we wanted them to look at the facilities, to look at how Title IX is supported by the school district, and also to look and see how they stand up against the North Carolina High School Athletic Association.
We issued a request for qualifications. We've had three firms submit their qualifications, and we would like them to present to the board on the 22nd of January, starting at 9:00 AM, and run it to the president.
When is that?
22nd.
January 22nd.
Thank it.
Is that not the conference, Jill? What's the dates?
Yes, I think it is.
It is.
Yeah, I think it'll be here.
Well, some of us might.
Well, we can, we can revise that. I thought it was the 22nd.
I know three of us that aren't gonna be here.
You still know of it.
What I wanted you to touch on, as we talked in committee, was about the schools, some of the long-term needs that the schools had concerning their athletics, and how these people would, whoever does this, would, would be the people that would go look at every school and see what is really needed, or so we could maybe expedite some of the things that were asked about.
Right. The, the firms would concentrate mostly on the high schools, but also look at the middle schools. They would look at conditions of locker rooms. They would look at the football fields. I, I know we need lighting, some new lighting for the athletic fields to meet the, the North Carolina athletic standards. And it, it would be a broad look, and an unbiased look, and it would list the items with associated costs, which could be used to support decisions.
If, if I could, the facilities study that was completed two years ago, I guess, now, time has really flown, included many of the improvements that are apparent for the exterior facilities, including some of the lighting issues that have already been discussed and evaluated at great length. One of the most important aspects of this, though, is to provide a, a master plan for orderly growth at each school site. Because what we've run into is, a good example was at South Brunswick High School last year. We discovered that some of the facilities for some of the children were not as good as they needed to be. And we immediately took corrective action. But we, we decided we did not like those kinds of discoveries. We wanted to get ahead of it. So I, I think it's a great move, and it'll provide us a master plan for the future.
Now, when they go out and make this study, I assume they talk with the athletic, athletic directors and coaches at each school and-
Yes, and we would recommend possibly, if the board desires, to have the athletic directors from the high schools attend the presentation.
Absolutely. And it will be really-
Easy to get, and we will do that, what the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's recommendations, particularly in lighting. That's one of their number one issues, particularly in football, with the injuries that, that happen in football in normal situations. And they have a, a listing that, that we will also get. And these contractors will be using that list to draw the pathway that you're talking about.
I was gonna make that quick distinction for the board. It, it really isn't about contractor qualification. It's designer selection.
Yes. I'm glad you said that.
Well, I was confused for a few minutes. Then I realized what I do sometimes when I'm working with my computer, I cut and paste the bit. I think Jill might have cut and pasted it.
That clarifies it. Another thing that I, I think we touched on was the inclusion of some of the athletic booster clubs, some of their presidents and getting some of their ideas, because, you know-
Right, right. Once they, once a firm is selected, then we can sit down with them to discuss our expectations, and, and discuss how we would like them to go about, or at least have input, and negotiate a fee.
Just one final comment, if I could. The board, at every occasion over the last several years, since, since, I guess, we started the initial facilities study, has sought public participation in evaluating what's needed at our schools for, for the future. Not just the facility maintenance and things like that, that are technical in nature, but we wanted to have as much input from the public and participation as possible. I hope that we will find a way in which more of the public will participate in, in this and other activities of the board and the school system, in trying to piece together what our real cost for improvements to the school system will be for the next few years, because we need as much support as possible when it comes to finding the resources to complete those needs. Every one of these schools each month have a, a substantial list of things that we need to address. But unfortunately, we just don't have a lot of money right now to address those with. So we need the public to be involved. And as Mr. Eiler said earlier, you know, we need to let people know what we need. So their participation is encouraged and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Is there something else?
And- Excuse me, Craig.
Okay, excuse me. Item number two, can, can I move on to item two? Item number two concerned contractor pre-qualification, construction contractors. And the North Brunswick High School addition, which is in design right now, the, is required by state law to have pre-qualification of the subcontractors. And we have, we have sent to, through, through our legal counsel, we have sent to Brunswick County, the pre-qualification forms, which will be used for the subcontractor pre-qualification. For, for the Wacoma addition, it's, it will be a single contract that the architect has recommended that we use a pre-qualification process for, to get the best contractors for our dollar. And we, we would like to submit to the next policy committee, a pre-qualification policy for board review and approval.
You're gonna run that through operations first, or you can go straight to the policy?
Either or.
Okay.
I would anticipate that it would go through operations first.
Yeah.
And then come into the policy. Because of the operational side, I've been getting the, as you would do on your computer, the I's dotted and the T's crossed before we go into the policy piece, and then make the policy fit what we have to, to do.
Is the policy part of compliance with the law?
Yes.
So, and, and it's sort of like, in order to meet compliance standards, we need to have developed and adopted a policy. But we have some time to get that done? It's not an emergency, is it?
No, I mean, Craig, it's not an emergency.
Well, for the, the two projects I mentioned, the, the county commission was, because they are signing the contracts, it's their policy. And I've been working with Rod, Rod, Rod Malone, and also with, with their counsel, Brian Bratton. And, and they're revising their counsel and using the questionnaires that we passed through Rod.
So for those two projects, we don't have to have the policy adopted?
Right, right.
Because they, they, we're, they are agents, as it were. But in the future, we will need to adopt the policy, so.
I think, Mr. Thompson, to answer your question, I think it would be, the first step would be to filter it through operations. And once that is hammered out, then go to policy.
Mr. Eckert, you might want to touch upon exactly what pre-qualification means. I believe this is the first time we've done this, if I'm not sure.
The, the pre-qualification process, and it, it was spelled out specifically for construction manager at-risk contracts. But a standard pre-qualification policy would look at a contractor's past record. It would look at his experience, time in business, financial stability, performance in the contracts and construction that they've already done, be it litigation, or, or other issues that might not be desirable to bring on board. The State Construction Office, pre-qualification forms have a, a clear point rate- The State Construction Office, prequalification forms have a clear point rating system, and all prequalification policies and procedures need to be totally transparent. So it can't be like a subjective call that, well, I don't like this contractor, we're not going to use them. It needs to be able to stand up to scrutiny.
And as we discussed in operations, the county is already using prequalification, and all vendors, licensed vendors, are eligible for prequalification. So it really is not a limitation on who can bid, but it certainly does help us evaluate who the best bidders are.
You going to bring it about postponing the period advisory? All right. Any other questions, Mr. Eckert? Thank you. You don't have any questions for yourself? Thank you.
Madam Chair, please, again, thank you for taking the time, even though this was looked at in the committee and passed, to bring it out and that transparency issue, so that, you know, we're going to spend a lot of money on facilities over the next few years. I mean, Vicki and Paul just laid out a minor portion of it. And for our public to hear that we're doing it according to the way it should be, according to the law, I think it's really nice that we did this. Thank you.
Let's see, and these are just other notices? Now, the one change, the parent advisory council meeting is scheduled for next week, and during some, we're going to have a meeting with the president next week, and we're going to postpone the January meeting and just meet in February at this time, so I can get all your little children back, and routine's a little bit better at school. So we will have it February. And the committee meeting's January, and then we'll let Jill check and see if that, maybe the contractor presentations could be on the 20th. That's the note that I had, so I don't know if that's the case, but we'll double check.
Well, Kathy, if I could add a little bit, too. I had talked with you, of course, and Jill, and we had planned to meet with the new PAC president on the 12th, the two of us, and go through our policies concerning the PACs, and get her input, if she thinks we could make them any better or change anything. We'd like to see our PAC groups more involved than they have been, and say we want to strengthen that.
We're just going to go back and revisit the policy, too, because I think we, the initial organization of PAC has kind of veered away from what it originally was, and so we want to try to hone back in and get it, get back on track, so that each school's PAC will report to the county PAC, and from there, go back and disseminate information. That's really the ideal purpose of the PAC. And so we just kind of want to revisit the policy and the procedures and how it's set up and kind of maybe just shift a little bit. And with your guidance, Ms. Simeon, we'll work on that. All right. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for closed session with a five-minute break in between.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to enter closed session pursuant to General Statutes 143-318-11A1 for student confidentiality, and
All right.
402-318-11A3 for attorney-client privilege, and confidential personnel matters for 318-11A6 with a five-minute recess as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Thorson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, we will have a five-minute break.